Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you call the roll.
Levin.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Hanquist.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Mulliner.
Here.
Brennan.
Here.
Sabatino.
Here.
Deuter.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Leader.
Here.
Palmsky.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
York.
Here.
Fourteen present, zero absent.
Fourteen present, zero absent. We have a quorum. On to Agenda Item 3, receipt of written communications from the public. At this time, are there any written communications? Anyone in the public audience have any written communications they wish to submit? Please identify yourself. I see one. Sir, whatever you have, please bring it up and hand it to Clerk Spencer.
You don't have to run. Thank you.
She wants this meeting to be short, Patty. Anyone else have any written communications they wish to submit? Seeing none, we'll go on to public forum. Public forum is an opportunity for anybody in the audience to address the council on any item they so choose. We ask that you direct your attentions directly to the chair. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes, based on, out of respect for work that we have to get done here this evening, and also out of respect for other folks who may want to speak. When you are identified, we ask that you approach this microphone up here on my right, your left. We are recording, so we ask that you identify yourself when you get to the microphone. Addresses are optional. Clerk Spencer, at this, oh, if you go over three minutes, I will give you a gentle reminder and ask you to wrap up your comments. Clerk Spencer, at this time, is there anyone who wishes to address the council?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, and I'll start with Barbara Lonergan.
Barbara Lonergan, 261 West Fremont Avenue. On behalf of residents negatively impacted by O'Hare Fly Quiet Test 3, thanks to the city for the latest communication effort, the September E news blast that was sent to residents who have subscribed to receive the city's news announcements. Thank you also for your role in inviting and encouraging District 205 School Board to join ONCC. We are encouraged by the last three ONCC meetings, whereas it has been stated by the commission that the runway rotation test 3 is not equitable. The ONCC chair has stressed how pleased she is with the constructive conversations from the previous meetings, both from committee members but also from the public. She stated that in addition to surveys and complaints, it is, quote, "the anecdotal information from mayors and representatives that is particularly helpful." We encourage the city of Elmhurst to provide that anecdotal information to the commission. They encourage and are carefully considering our feedback. At the last ad hoc committee meeting, we had a number of questions for that committee, and as of last Monday, those questions had yet to be answered and delivered to Alderman Dunn. We have the same questions and will ask them at Thursday's ad hoc committee meeting. These questions include: When will a final decision on runway rotations be made? What factors play into that decision and what weight do those factors carry? Are reps voting strictly based on what is best for their communities? Are complaints and complainants compared as apples to apples? Or is consideration given to the population or number of households per community? For example, Elmhurst has 40,000 fewer residents and 20,000 fewer households than Des Plaines. Are complaints being verified by rotation? Is a complaint from a west suburb being considered when traffic is in fact flying over a northeast community? What percent of time is the complaint website failing? Ninety-nine point nine percent of complaints are filed through the website. How often and what time span has the noise complaint site failed and during which rotations? If the Fly Quiet Runway Rotation Plan was based primarily on complaints from communities that were negatively impacted by night traffic, why are complaints not considered during these three tests? Is the future runway rotation decision-making process documented for the public to see? And if so, where can the public find that? If not, why not? Why were questions seventeen through twenty-one added to the test three survey when they were not included in test one or test two? How will those survey questions be analyzed when there is nothing to compare that information with? Who performs the data analysis and is it validated by a third party? How are Fly Quiet runway rotations utilizing compatible land use corridors such as forest preserves, highways, commercial, and industrial areas? And which runways utilize compatible land use corridors specifically for landings? Noise data will factor into the decision-making process. How does that work when negatively impacted communities don't have noise monitors? Is noise data compiled during Fly Quiet runway rotation hours of 7:00 PM through 7:00 AM or over a 24-hour period? Why are runways being decommissioned and/or demolished before we have an adequate night rotation plan in place? We're hoping that by sharing these questions with you, you may also have your own questions to add to the mix. Test one started in July of 2016, so we're hoping that this is not the first time these questions have been asked, and more importantly, we're hoping that the ONCC has answers that they are willing to share with all communities impacted by nighttime air traffic. If we are not provided the answers at the ONCC shortly after Thursday's ad hoc meeting, we will again be asking them, this time to the full commission on October 6th. Thank you.
Edgar Powell.
My name is Edgar Powell and I live in 159 South Cottage Hill Avenue, Apartment 314 in Elmhurst. I happen to be a new resident in Elmhurst. I moved into the city two months ago. My previous home was with my parents, also where in DuPage County. I really like it here so far. I like my new home, the community. One thing that I did notice about my new home, however, is that my apartment building does not provide recycling services. And some of you on the council might recognize this issue because I've contacted you about it recently. So I've asked my building manager why they don't provide recycling services. I don't really get a clear answer. I hear it might be due to a cost issue or maybe logistics, but either way, I just don't have access to that type of service. And that kind of saddens me because as an environmentally conscious person, I've been recycling my entire life, whether I was at my prior homes with my family, or in school, or at the dormitories in college, I was always recycling. And when I moved here into Elmhurst, this was the first time ever that I just did not have access to that type of service. So I get that I'm probably in a very small minority in this city. Most people who live in the single-family homes or the smaller homes in Elmhurst do get access to city-funded recycling services. And a lot of people who live in the multifamily apartment buildings and condos also get some recycling services provided by their building managers. I guess I just happen to be in a building that doesn't have that option, and my neighbors and I, as a result, don't get to participate in the same recycling services that the rest of us in Elmhurst do. So the reason I'm here tonight before you all is to ask you to consider a new ordinance to require multifamily buildings in Elmhurst to provide recycling services to residents. It's not, it's not an unusual ordinance. I can think of four other communities in DuPage that require the same thing. So in the document that I just provided to the clerk, I've provided excerpts from the municipal codes of Downers Grove, Glen Ellen, Westmont, and Whedon that have that type of ordinance or that type of requirement that I'm asking you to consider. Fortunately, I've been able to get in touch with Alderman, Deuter, Sabatino, and Bram on this issue, and I'm very appreciative for your interest in this. And I also understand that the issue is being reviewed by city staff and the Public Works and Buildings Committee. And again, I'm really appreciative of that. So I just ask you as a council to continue your support and consideration on this matter. Thank you.
That is all who signed in tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, that's it for folks who signed up for public forum at this time. Is there anybody who did not have an opportunity to sign up on our sign-in sheet but wishes to address the council at this time? Please raise your hand. Seeing none, we'll move on. Announcements, just one quick announcement for me, and that is that I apologize to those in the audience. I think this is the third time in my tenure that our executive session has gone over. We were discussing a bunch of stuff, and we started the meeting about 15 minutes later. I apologize for that. Any other announcements from the dais? Alderman York.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd like to share some news about Elmhurst College with the city council and the community. This year, this incoming class and overall enrollment are both the highest in college history. So the freshman class started in late August. Thirty-five hundred and twenty-nine students includes our first-year class, transfer students, new traditional part-time students, Elsa students, and new graduate students, along with, of course, people who decided to come back for this year. So this is a great achievement in the world of higher education. Another very exciting thing about this particular class is that, for the first time in years, the dorms are being utilized to ninety-seven percent. Typically, it's been much, much less than that, and that'll add a lot of vibrancy to the campus, not only during the week but on the weekends, too. More kids living in dorms, spend a little bit more time here in the weekends and everything, too. So very exciting news from Elmhurst College. Just wanted everybody to be aware of it.
Any other announcements? Alderman Levin.
Thank you. I just wanted to, I don't know if it's other business or announcement, but I'll do it here. We had a member of the public approach the council in public comment last week, expressing concern about gun training at the Knights of Columbus on South York Road, and we, the police chief was involved in getting information, and it was addressed at Public Safety last week. It's one of those issues that spread quickly on social media. There was, it was addressed that there was shooting and guns that were going to be present at the Knights of Columbus. The Knights, who've been very community-oriented, were concerned themselves that there was misinformation that was starting to spread.
York.
We received the assurances we needed at Public Safety.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
There were no guns.
Okay, on to Agenda Item 6.9. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you read the recommendation.
There's no shooting.
Okay. Therefore, the Development Planning and Zoning Committee recommends that the city
It's classroom-only, and of course, we do not and should not regulate content of what's
council approve the applicant's request for an amended conditional use.
taught in the classrooms, but the Knights wanted to make sure that the community understood
The city attorney is hereby directed to prepare the necessary documents for city council
that they are very concerned. They also have a liquor license, that no weapons or shooting would be occurring on
approval.
Okay, to put this-
Wait.
their premises, and I hope that brings the issue to a close.
Sorry.
Sorry. Signed by Michael Hanquist, Chairman, Noel Toledo, Vice Chairman, and Mark A. Mulliner.
Okay. Any other announcements? On to Consent Agenda, Agenda Item 6. Okay, to put this before council, I ask for a motion to approve the report, and At this time, is there any item on the consent agenda any alderman wishes to have pulled recommendation is read. Motion by Alderman Hanquist, second by Alderman Toledo. to vote no or provide additional comment? Alderman Hanquist, your report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this is a piece of property that the city is using for stormwater improvement.
Alderman Bram.
Because of how we're addressing this, we have to move some parking places.
Six point nine.
Six point nine. Any others? I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus Item 6.9.
It's, there's kind of currently a dual agreement, I guess, between Jackson School and the church,
Motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Mulliner. Clerk Spencer.
Therefore, the Development Planning and-
where there's plenty of parking there. There's also street parking.
Nope, you don't got to do the, it's a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So the city's actually the applicant just to add fourteen spaces north of the church,
Minus six point nine.
I apologize for that.
and that'll address the parking needs that are there.
Levin.
Aye.
Park.
The rest of the church's needs have been grandfathered under conditional use.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mulliner.
So that's pretty much this request.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Okay.
Sabatino.
Alderman Bram, you pulled this, or you requested that this be pulled?
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Dunn.
Aye.
I want to first start out, I attempted to reach out to Alderman Mulliner today to resolve
Leader.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
my questions, and I, the day got away from me, and I wasn't able to sync up with staff
Bram.
Aye.
Toledo.
or anybody from the committee. My question here is, and I think Alderman Hanquist might have answered it, but maybe get some clarification. I understand this is about the conditional use, but who is constructing these parking spaces? To my interpretation, it was the city, and is the city paying for these parking spaces to be constructed? And then the last question is, was that in the agreement of the purchase of this property with Christ United?
Yes and yes. The answer is yes and yes.
Yes and yes. So it was in the original agreement of the sale of the property. How much additional cost for the permeable pavers?
It would be an incremental cost between the asphalt that we were going to use and the pavers, some of the base. I think we estimated the cost originally to be, I'm looking at Howard to help me out, fifty to sixty thousand, I believe, for the parking spaces.
So that's-
Some incremental cost on top of that.
Okay. Do we know where those funds are coming for, since those aren't planned initially?
Point of order.
Alderman Mulliner.
This has nothing to do with the zoning issue. This part, the development and building of the parking lot, will come before another committee at some point, I'm assuming. I'm assuming it's not going to stay at our committee. I'm assuming it's going back to another committee. We should be talking about the zoning issue. We requested that something be looked at as a-
Okay, so we have a point of order that discussion is outside the scope of the report.
Absolutely.
I understand that. We do allow some leeway. I understand Alderman Bram's questions that will most likely be answered another time.
If, if that is factual, that, I know Alderman Mulliner just said he assumes that this is the case. If that is factual, that it will be discussed at another time. I thought this was-
Yeah, well, we bet it exceed the dollar amount, so it will have to. So the answer is yes.
Okay.
So, okay, and okay, let's move on.
Okay.
Or, I'm sorry, any other questions within the scope of our report here? Clerk Spencer.
Levin.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Agenda Item 6.9 is approved. On to Committee Reports, 7.1. Clerk Spencer, I'd ask that you read the recommendation.
It is therefore the consensus of the Finance Council Affairs and Administrative Services Committee that the city council direct the city attorney to prepare the documents necessary to renew the current line of credit with Fifth Third Bank with a $7.5 million balance, an adjustable interest rate based on the one-month LIBOR rate plus eighty basis points, the unused loan balance fee of twenty basis points, and term of three years to expire on October 31, 2020. Signed by Kevin L. York, Chairman, Tina Park, Mike Brennan, unsigned by Mark P. Sabatino.
Okay, to put this before council, I'll ask for a motion to approve the report, and recommendation is read. Motion by Alderman York, second by Alderman Sabatino. Alderman York, your report.
Thank you, Your Honor. So the report goes into kind of the history of the line of credit and how it's used. The line of credit is used as financing exclusively for TIF projects within the city. And at various times throughout the history, it's gone up and it's gone down, but the reason that we wanted to get this on the report agenda is, we're renewing the line of credit, which is currently at $5 million. We're renewing the line of credit, and we're also increasing the line of credit to seven and a half million dollars. The TIF V agreement will require some cash to provide incentives to the BMW dealership, and the money's going to be obtained from the line of credit, the increase in the line of credit. Right now, if you saw on the consent agenda, we drew the line out to the full $5 million to pay for some TIF IV expenses, so we need an additional amount of money to finance some expenses for TIF V. All the terms are pretty much, they're exactly the same as they were for the $5 million line of credit. It's a three-year term. We suspect that we're going to need the money for at least three years. The funds will be paid back through incremental property taxes and/or sales taxes from additional automobiles that are going to be sold as a result of the project. And it's in our benefit to look at the line more often than not, so that if we do bring it down a level, we don't end up keeping it too high of a line of credit and end up paying the unused line fee on that. So basically, we're just asking for approval to renew and increase the line of credit for TIF expenses. Appreciate your support.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll ask Clerk Spencer to call the vote.
Levin.
Aye.
Park.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Sabatino.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
Bram.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
York.
Aye.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays.
Fourteen ayes, zero nays. Motion carries. Agenda Item 7.1 is approved. On to Reports and Recommendations, 8.1. Mayor Morley, that's me. Couple of things this evening. First, I want to thank Public Works and our fire department. I know that the last two weeks have been the busiest for block parties in the entire summer, including my block party, which unfortunately was scheduled at the exact same time as Beer Fest, which I was unable to attend because of the block party. However, Beer Fest, was it the third annual? Is it the third one? Third Annual Beer Fest was sold out, a wild success between Rotary and Heritage Foundation, and I look forward to next year. Usually, have they announced next year's date already?
They have not.
They have not?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so the rest of my report. Bit of a challenging one this night, tonight, folks, but something I feel like needs to be said. I think it's, I would categorize our current relationship with District 205 and the school board as strained. That'd be the way I'd categorize it. For whatever reason, in the past four weeks, the school board and District 205 has ramped up their rhetoric regarding its relationship with the city. Now, I'm a little surprised by this recent turn of events, as I had a meeting with two school board members about five months ago, and at which time, in that meeting, I was specifically asked not to go public with our disagreements. I think most folks are aware, we have some disagreements as it relates to TIF increment or surplus. We also have some challenges as it relates to some of the stormwater ask with the school board. Now, in that meeting I had five months ago, I was asked not to go public with our disagreement because I was told it was unproductive. And up until today, I've honored that commitment. I was also told, surprisingly, in that meeting, when discussing the Bryan project and explaining that the city did indeed have a Plan B option, which was south of Butterfield, I was told that the residents won't care about the $2 million incremental cost for that project, much to my surprise. So, recently, due to repeated statements, I feel compelled to respond. I also feel it's important that the aldermen, clerk, and treasurer know what is being said so they can be prepared to respond to residents who may hear these comments. In the last four weeks, there have been two board meetings, a board highlights email sent district-wide, and a press release sent out by District 205. In these communications, the city has been accused of the following: confiscating money from 205 and from the children of Elmhurst; we have been instructed to enjoy digging holes with that money while they fire teachers; we have been accused of changing our mind on what is important in our community; we've been accused of breaking our promise, promises that we will value education on an equal basis and equal footing with our businesses and incentives; we've been accused of being irresponsible; it has also been stated that the city of Elmhurst doesn't share the same values, the same sense of priority, and the same sense of what is important in this community. We've also been repeatedly told that we do not value education. I say to all of you, I find it very difficult to work in a constructive manner with one of our fellow elected bodies when these statements are made publicly. In addition to these statements, there's also been what I would consider an intent to mislead on other subjects. For example, stated in a meeting and issued in a press release, there was a statement about how District 205 negotiated and reached a tentative agreement with the city of Elmhurst for the sale of the portion of Bryan Middle School for a stormwater project. I would disagree that we received, we reached a tentative agreement. I think most members on this council would disagree as well. In addition, it was stated, "The good news is, ultimately, we went with another plan that was located at a lesser-priced piece of land further away from the school." Now, if you didn't know anything about the project, you would believe that statement where it was stated that a lesser piece of land, lesser-priced piece of land was utilized, you'd believe that the project was cheaper. Make no mistake, that was our Plan B. After almost three years of trying to work with the school district, the city council instructed the city manager and staff to go find a Plan B because 122 homes of Elmhurst residents would be affected during a storm event. Now, staff did what we asked, and they found us a Plan B, but make no mistake, that Plan B for the equivalent amount of storage will cost the residents an additional $2 million, or the council must decide to store less water and save money. In addition, I come to find out after watching the last meeting that the TIF IV agreement, which according to the school board, some Elmhurst aldermen think is generous, and I'll remind the folks what the TIF IV agreement basically said, and that is that we did a quick calculation on the tax revenue if we hadn't put the TIF in place, and we determined that over a 23-year period, the school district could anticipate about $1 million in incremental increase. Well, our agreement in TIF IV not only gave them $1 million within the first 90 days of that agreement, it might have been the first 120 days, but within the first three months of that agreement, we wrote a check to the school district for $1 million. In addition, we have a revenue-sharing agreement after 11 years where they'll get 10% of the increment. But if you are to watch the school board, you are being led to believe that that was not a generous agreement, and I would state that there is no other agreement like it in the state of Illinois in terms of sharing. However, according to school board members, that agreement was a settlement with the city because apparently we were attempting to remove monies that they were owed. I don't know how that works, but the statement was made that that was a settlement between our two bodies. As it relates to Bryan, I find it interesting that the school district will complete, will continue to point to the fact that they are running a deficit and that they need our help with potential TIF funds. However, when we told them that Bryan was going to cost us $2 million more, they were indifferent. In fact, they put in writing to us. Now, I'm not going to read everything that they put in writing to us, but this is directly from what we received. "With the protection of the homeowners no longer in question, only the cost of it, the district believes, only the cost of it, the district believes, that losing a portion of the assembled Bryan campus and undertaking a long-term issue with vehicle storage are not worth it just to save the city money." Basically, what they are saying is, now that we have another option, it doesn't matter what the cost is. I find that ironic that we're arguing over dollars. The bottom line, what does it mean? Well, I'll have to say that the trust between, the fact that we have trust issues between these two groups would be an understatement. We have needs, the school board has needs. I am asking President Ebner and Superintendent Moeller to join me in putting the needs of the residents of Elmhurst ahead of this public sniping. I've set it off, and I'll say it again. It is not my land, it is not my money. It is not your land, and it is not your money. However, according to school board members, that agreement was a settlement with the city because apparently we were attempting to remove monies that they were owed. I don't know how that works, but the statement was made that that was a settlement between our two bodies. As it relates to Bryan, I find it interesting that the school district will complete, will continue to point to the fact that they are running a deficit and that they need our help with potential TIF funds. However, when we told them that Bryan was going to cost us $2 million more, they were indifferent. In fact, they put in writing to us. Now, I'm not going to read everything that they put in writing to us, but this is directly from what we received. "With the protection of the homeowners no longer in question, only the cost of it, the district believes, only the cost of it, the district believes, that losing a portion of the assembled Bryan campus and undertaking a long-term issue with vehicle storage are not worth it just to save the city money." Basically, what they are saying is, now that we have another option, it doesn't matter what the cost is. I find that ironic that we're arguing over dollars. The bottom line, what does it mean? Well, I'll have to say that the trust between, the fact that we have trust issues between these two groups would be an understatement. We have needs, the school board has needs. I am asking President Ebner and Superintendent Moyer to join me in putting the needs of the residents of Elmhurst ahead of this public sniping. I've set it off and I'll say it again. It's not my land, it is not my money, it is not your land, and it is not your money. It's the taxpayers' land and the taxpayers' money. We owe it to our residents to work together. Once again, we are caught in a he-said, she-said. It is apparent to me, based on their most recent actions, that District 205 wishes to have these discussions in public. That's fine with me. I cannot think of one good reason as to why we are not having these discussions in public in joint meetings. In fact, the only time in my tenure as mayor we've had any production between the two of us is when we had public meetings. We have needs and we have honest disagreements. Let's confront those disagreements in the public. Let us get together and meet the needs of our residents. Ladies and gentlemen, we are failing our residents. There's a lack of trust between our two groups. President Ebner and Superintendent Moyer, I ask you to join me. Let's draw a line in the sand tonight. Let's move forward. Let's not look back. Let's meet and iron out our differences for the benefit of the residents of Elmhurst. I am preparing a presentation for the residents of Elmhurst in which I would plan to provide a stormwater update, a long-overdue stormwater update. Included in this presentation will be the status of our relationships with both the parks and the schools, and will also include an update on TIFs. I will also be sending President Ebner and Superintendent Moyer a request that we set up a meeting, a public meeting, where we discuss our differences, discuss our needs, and come to an arrangement on how we can work together for the residents of Elmhurst. That's my report.
All right, well, let the city manager. Go ahead.
Thank you. The first is an update on the Nycor project along Madison Avenue. We heard today at a meeting that Director Killian had with the folks from Nycor that they are going to stop short of their goal of getting all the way to York due to weather concerns and upcoming winter conditions. So, they're going to stop the underground pipe at Parkside. They're going to fully restore Madison from Parkside West this year, including curb and landscape and everything that they need to do. They will pick it up next year, and we will continue to work with Nycor on when and how that happens. And they will pick it up in the spring and then continue that project to the east. It's unfortunate, but apparently the conditions were different from what they initially thought. The second item I have is, I think a few weeks ago, somebody brought up the issue of the hurricane damage and how we can possibly help with that effort. One of our staff members was able to find a way to help. Paul Burris, who is our water and wastewater manager, was contacted by a company out of Houston and asked to come down personally to supervise some wastewater treatment plants that were either damaged or demolished in the, in Hurricane Harvey. And so, he is down there for a week, and then he'll be back, and then possibly go another week to help in that effort. So, I wanted everybody to know that we've, we found arrangements so that he could go and so that everything at the wastewater treatment plant is still being taken care of in Elmhurst, but he's able to use his expertise down there to help those residents. That's it.
Any other reports? Alderman Muller.
I'd kind of like to take a minute and follow up on your statement, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to take a minute, if you don't mind, and kind of give people a little bit of an overview of a couple of things. One is the TIFs and the other is the stormwater situation. I just want to make it really clear to everybody that the stormwater that we're dealing with, especially down in the Bryan area, is an area that's been devastated and has, has been addressed in a very minimal way, primarily on the area of sanitary stormwater at this point. And what we're left dealing with now is the actual water itself that comes down in the storms, and we're very happy that something is finally happening. I'm, I too, I'm very disappointed in nothing that was able to be worked out between the school district and the city. I'm also very disappointed in the condition of the property that is at that corner. I get complaints on a constant basis of how bad that property looks, and I'm, I'm concerned about that, and I'll just be very honest, and I don't want to go into much more detail on that. But I do want to talk for a minute, if you don't mind, about TIF. Because TIF is an area that we seem to get a lot of press on, that, I'm not sure of the accuracy of some of it, so I just want to take a minute, if you don't mind, and kind of walk through the TIFs. There's probably nobody in this room, except maybe Tom Trozine, who's been here through every single TIF, with the exception of me. I started going to city council meetings in 1983. We didn't have our first TIF until then. I attended all of the meetings, I learned what the purpose of the TIF was, and by the way, I worked for the school district, so I understood the benefits and the pluses and minuses to it on both sides. In the beginning days, the TIFs were great, and everybody loved the fact, even on the school district side, that we put in TIFs. The whole purpose of a TIF was to make it so that we could increase the assessed value of the property, which then, long-term, focused on long-term, would provide some additional dollars for the school districts and the park districts and every other taxing body. We started off with one that was called TIF one, it's still in existence today, it's the one in the downtown area. That one was kind of an interesting one when we first put it together. It was a sales TIF and a, and the land TIF. It was both. If you were around here in the 1980s, I grew up in town, I know a lot of the aldermen here grew up in town, so that they know what the town was like in the 1980s, you could have rolled a bowling ball down York Road and it wouldn't have hit anybody. There was nobody down there. Nothing was happening. The TIF was put in place and a lot of development occurred. It occurred because of the fact that we had the ability to have a tool available to us to help, and that's why we put that TIF in place. Our focus was not on what we were doing for the city of Elmhurst, but what we were doing for, for all of the taxing bodies, including the school district. We understood, and we still as a council, and I believe this to this day, as a council, understand that our function is to keep our taxes as low as possible, our property taxes as low as possible, so that the dollars are available for the school districts. And that's what the TIFs were for. That's what the first TIF was for, that's what the fifth TIF is for. It's so that we can maximize the dollars of the land that we have. We're landlocked. It's very difficult to grow in a community that's landlocked. So, what we were able to do with the TIF was we were able to actually make some growth happen. In 2004, so everybody understands this, we came up with a creative land-sharing process where basically we released all of, all of the property that had been built up that was residential in that area, because the school district was concerned that they were getting all of these residents and all of these students moving into the schools. The truth of the matter is, there weren't very many students who were moving in, but we released that. And at that same time, what we did was, we agreed that we would extend the TIF because we had a lot of other projects to do. So, we took time to extend the TIF, and it was a sharing agreement, and we did that once again to benefit all of the taxing bodies, not just to take money and put it in the city's coffers. That's not what its function was. Its function was to benefit everybody. That, that exchange at that time helped the school districts and helped all the other taxing bodies, including, by the way, the city, because we collected money off of that and we're able to put it back in our general revenue. TIF two, just so everybody understands, TIF two was up on Lake Street. The reason why we did TIF two was primarily for one reason. We saw a great opportunity for some great development up in TIF two, and we had land up there, but none of the owners of the land were willing to talk to anybody. So, what we did was, we consolidated land. We purchased land up there, we brought it together, and then we put the land up for sale, and we sold it. You know what? I got more phone calls on that TIF than I got on any TIF that I've had. And what the complaint was at the time was, why aren't we giving it to Krispy Kremes? Everybody wanted us to put the Krispy Kremes headquarters up there. We had a choice between Krispy Kremes and a car dealership that had three car dealerships in Elmhurst. They were going to leave town if we didn't work with them. They offered us the same dollar amount, they actually offered us, I believe, more. We took the car dealerships, they're here today, they're still here. They're a very good car dealership. They bring in sales tax, which, by the way, sales tax, a lot of it's not paid by the residents of Elmhurst, the people who come in from an outer community. Those dollars are used to help to pay the city's tab. And at the same time, the school district benefited because there were properties up there that increased the assessed value. The third TIF came around when Tom Markucci came into office, and he was already in for a little while, but the primary focus of the third TIF was, when he became the mayor, he walked over on the roads, over on St. Charles Road, and he walked over to the Public Works Garage, he walked up on top of the hill, and he said, "There's something wrong here. This is facing Route 83." And he was dead serious. Our Public Works Garage was sitting on a prime piece of property on Route 83, looking right straight at Route 83. We had a Corvettes there. Corvettes gone. Property was pretty much dead. We moved that Public Works Garage and did some TIF incentives. They built a fantastic facility over there, and we have one of the best shopping malls in the area there. That TIF has been a fantastic TIF, it's paid back. It also, not only did it pay back what we paid to do the project, but it also paid for our Public Works Garage. We used those TIF dollars to pay for the Public Works Garage because we were able to move the Public Works Garage using those TIF dollars. Once again, those are new assessed values that helped everybody, including the schools, they will help everybody. Those are dollars that are going to be freed up that allow the school district, everybody to increase their, their base that they're working off of. TIF four, we all know about it. It's a fantastic agreement. One of the things that we were able to do with, with TIF four, in addition to what the mayor has already said, was, we were able to incorporate into TIF four Churchville, Conrad Fisher, and a park. What's the benefit to that? Any capital projects that are done there, if a school district or park district wants to come to us, we can use some of those TIF dollars to assist in those. That's what's unheard of before we did this in Elmhurst. It was, it was available, it was an option, but nobody else did it. We did it. Okay? So, I just, I just really feel that it's important for everybody to truly understand that we're not doing this because we're trying to put more money into the coffers of the city. What we're trying to do is create that tax base, that EAV, and the EAV is what all of the other taxing bodies work off of. And it's so important for us as a city to make sure that we're focused on that. When I first started getting involved with the city, we didn't have to worry about economic development, it wasn't one of our critical things. In today's world, if we don't worry about economic development, we become a ghost town. For those of us who have lived here our entire lives, we all know that in 1956, we had an opportunity to have the Oakbrook Shopping Center in here. Our forefathers said, "No, that's not a good idea." So, now it's in Oakbrook and it's not in Elmhurst. We could have had that here. Would that have helped us? There's pluses and minuses to it, but it's what we did. Now, we really have to focus on economic development so that we can help those other taxing bodies as much as us. So, I, I'm sorry, I'm taking a little bit of time, but I just think it's really important for everybody in the community to understand how important these TIFs are to the city of Elmhurst and to all taxing bodies, especially the school districts at the end of the day. These are going to be extremely beneficial and already have been beneficial to them. So, thank you. Sorry for taking so time.
Thank you, Alderman Muller. Any other reports or comments? Alderman Palmsky.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I would like to add on to some of what's been said tonight. Thank you for the, I guess, the background to what's been happening, the background with I'd say that the city and District 205 have benefited from working together, and the residents of Elmhurst are best served when we continue to do so. I too have been surprised over the last several months with the comments that have been made at school board meetings or with the official 205 communication. I'd also like to add in there, I was present at a PTA meeting where a school board member brought up the topic of TIF, and I said at that meeting, I think it's best to, that that topic and others like it involving city and schools where there's a price tag attached, that we had these meetings in a public forum. And I, so I'm glad that it's being proposed tonight. And as you, you mentioned, Mayor, I want to talk a little bit more about the Bryan project. It not only would have been less, less expensive for the taxpayers of Elmhurst than our alternative, but it could have greatly benefited 205. The project would have allowed for the city to clean up the gravel lot and equipment storage area, which currently is not code compliant. It would have allowed the city and 205 to work out an arrangement to store the equipment in our expanded garage, as we've done with the longstanding arrangement with the park district. The city would, or could have created additional storage in the gravel lot area, so District 205 could be better positioned to construct an addition onto Bryan if they wanted to in the future, while meeting the county stormwater requirements, which govern the, the need for a, a property of a certain size, a commercial property or a property like Bryan School, to store once they increase their impervious area. The city and the schools did meet jointly in public, as we remember, and as Mayor noted, we were productive during those times, but those came about when the messages from both governing bodies didn't line up. So, I believe resuming these public meetings with 205 and the city present would help clarify what's actually going on, and I think the public meetings are an ideal setting for the agenda items such as TIF, such as stormwater, and then we can get some, some work done. I look forward to working with the schools, and I hope they take up the mayor on his invitation to meet again publicly.
Thank you. Alderman Dunn?
Yeah, I want to veer into a different topic. Hopefully, everyone's had their say regarding the, the school district. Just a few comments on the, the recent ONCC meeting on September 8th, that was two Fridays ago. I attended that, as did some of our residents and Alderman Bram as well. Just a, a couple items from the report that was put out. We saw some data on takeoffs and landings in, in July was the most recent reporting, and we expect to see the August numbers at this week's ad hoc technical committee meeting, which will take place this Thursday at 2 o'clock at, at the CDA office. And in July, we had 13% of the takeoffs at night were on for our 22L, and 4% of the landings. In June, not much different, 17% of the takeoffs and, and 3% of the landings. So, we did roll into test three that last week in July, and I expect the numbers will be higher in August for, for, for the activity on that particular runway in the evening at night. And the, the reporting, they consider night, 10, 10 o'clock to 7:00 PM, whereas the actual runway rotation program is, is a little tighter window, more, more in line with 11:00 to 5:30, is generally when that is activated and deactivated, but it's, it occurs depending on the conditions on any given night. There was a, a gentleman from Pratt &amp; Whitney that spoke and talked about the, some interesting and exciting technologies in terms of engines. Pratt &amp; Whitney makes the jet engines, along with just a few other companies in the world. The noise contours that they, that he shared in terms of planes back 50 years ago with 707s compared to the new Airbus 320s that the Pratt &amp; Whitney engine is on have reduced about 90% in area. So, the footprint in terms of that high decibel level, a lot smaller than it used to be, which, which is great. Technology's helping us out there. These engines are getting shorter with larger fans, they have these advanced gearboxes, and the interesting thing is that on landing, we always think of the engines making a lot of noise. The one comment that Dr. Epstein made from Pratt &amp; Whitney was that the actual airframe is, is complicit in, in most of the noise, in, in a noise level that's equivalent to the engines, if not exceeding it in, in a lot of cases. So, the engines have, have been quieted down quite a bit, and they're, they're now, the suggestion is to look at the actual airframe itself. There has been some comments by the, concerns by the public about emissions, and we heard some good news on that. The, specifically NOx emissions in the past 30 years have decreased by 60%, and so that's, that's been a, a big plus that, that we're seeing from technology as far as these, these engines go. Comments on potentially using complaints for the evaluation, and we're, we're aware that the ONCC is guiding the communities to use the surveys, they, they tend to favor that. And, and I'll just give you an example of one of the reasons why that is. We have a town of, in terms of complaints, we have a town of Bensonville that has 18,000 in, in population in the latest census. In July, they had 87,000 complaints, 18,000 people living there, and they actually had 23,000 complainants, so that there's 5,000 more complainants there than, than actually live there. So, so, would be concerns about using complaints unless that is, is fixed. Whereas Elmhurst, we had- Whereas Elmhurst, we know we have 45,000. In terms of population, in July, we had 650 complaints and there were 90 complainants, so 90 separate people or devices that were filing complaints. So with that, I would say that we really want to focus on continuing to fill the surveys out. We've been meeting in committee the last few committee meetings, talking about new activities and ways to communicate, to continue to get the public to fill the surveys out, to voice our concerns about this Test 3 configuration. On another note, we are, as was mentioned, we're working with the FAA to bring them in here for a public meeting. That's looking like potentially October 3rd is a tentative date for that. That is a tentative date right now. And then also having some representatives from the CDA, we are still working on identifying a date with them. Thanks.
Alderman Dunn? Alderman Bram?
Thank you. And Alderman Dunn, excuse me, thank you for that summary and tapping all the data points that have been discussed over the last couple of weeks. I do want to just maybe clarify that maybe anyone who's listening might not pick up on, the ONCC meetings are open to the public. The one that Alderman Dunn said that is upcoming, this Thursday, September 21st at 2:00 p.m., the Chicago Department of Aviation Building, which is 10510 Zemke Road in Chicago technically, even though it's right near O'Hare. That is open to the public. They do allow for public comment at the end of the meetings. So if you are interested, please feel free to go to that meeting or any of the ONCC committee meetings, the ONCC meeting itself or some of the, I'll call them subcommittees. All of that is posted on the oherenoise.org website. It's a good website that provides the meeting minutes, provides the upcoming agendas for all these different subcommittees. And it is definitely, has a lot of presentation, a lot of resources if you want to catch up and understand what is going on. A lot of, I would call it misperception on some, have made comments in regards to, "You live next to O'Hare and get used to it." The reality is, we do live next to O'Hare and we have been used to it, but the clarification here is this is a rotation program, a pilot program that they're trying out, that there has been some discussion of extending it further, extending it further through 2020 and even possibly, who knows, forever. So the rotation, as Alderman Dunn talked about, the data points, is impacting Elmhurst residents every other week. And I want to make sure that's clear. And I think I said it before at a council meeting, but it's not the same old, same old that, you know, you moved in, you know that it's happened. It is a rotation program that is a 50% impacting of Elmhurst residents. And in this rotation, and I believe, I might be misspeaking on this point, I believe none of the previous rotations impacted a community 50% of the time. I don't know if that part is true, but I do know that it is impacting us 50% of the time. I also want to just say, you know, thank you to the committee in regards to taking up this issue and continuing, Public Affairs and Safety, Alderman Levin and Company, taking up this issue and continuing to talk about it, to discuss what we can do to communicate to all of Elmhurst as well as what we can do from a position perspective. I learned last council meeting, at the council meeting, on some of the things that have occurred, I'll say behind the scenes, which are positives with meeting other communities. So all of those are positives. I want to reinforce taking the survey. I do want to not trivialize the complaint hotline and filling out the complaint. Yes, there's a huge discrepancy in data points, but the hotline is there, the complaint website is there. We can't disregard that there's a possibility, a high possibility, that this might be utilized in some way, shape, or form when it comes to discussions on what rotation should look like in the near term as well as forever. The last thing I would like to ask is, I know that there was discussions in regards to our northern communities, if I may ask City Manager Grabowski. There was talks weeks ago at the council meeting, connecting with the southern communities. Do we have a status? Have we connected with them? And is there a summary if we have? And if we have not, when is the timetable to do that?
Is that the diagonal group?
Yes, the ones that are kind of southwest of us, not members of ONCC. I've talked to a number of the managers or administrators from the communities and it's not an instant overnight type of request that goes through. So there is some follow-up to be done. And in fact, I was just talking to one today who gave me a couple suggestions on how to approach their community. So I'm following up on that.
Any further development in regards to the northeastern communities since that previous meeting?
Alderman Dunn and I have received correspondence from Glenview, the community that we initiated that conversation with. And I believe they're working the same kind of channels on their end. I don't have an update other than that.
Thank you. Alderman York?
Thank you, Hunter. Just to kind of switch gears and go back to the TIF discussion, I appreciate your comments and I wasn't sure if there's a veiled question on when we may be getting back together and having public meetings. So that'd be interesting to, you know, find out and see when that's, when and if that's going to occur. I appreciate the comments by Alderman Muller and Palmski as well. The only thing I have to add in addition is that TIF creates, TIFs in general create value not only only within the boundaries of the TIF, but TIFs also create kind of a rising tide throughout the whole community, which everybody's able to tap into on a 24/7, 365 basis through increasing EAVs and how it factors in the tax bill. So I think that's something that, you know, TIFs also doing has been overlooked in some of the comments. So when you look at an area, you also have to look at the whole community in general and say that because the downtown is stronger, because the shopping center over here is stronger, whatever, we do see increasing values and immediate value to the other taxing bodies for those investments that a community, you know, it's a public financing method, you know, that the TIF is. And it benefits everybody more often than not. And I think the other thing too is, is that Alderman Muller commented about the 2004 agreement. And I do spend a lot of time in my role with Tom Trozine and speaking with Assistant City Manager Cop and Grabowski. I don't think there's anybody who believes that we would ever extended TIF 1 had the school district not been in need and came to the city and asking what we could do due to constraints with the sales tax, TIFs, and so on and so forth. Our only option was to do what we did and it was a fair and equitable agreement and provided everybody what they needed at that time to, you know, go along and proceed into the future. So I think your comments were justified and right and I appreciate them and I look forward to when the public meetings will resume.
Thank you. Okay. Any other reports? Alderman Bram?
Yeah, I apologize. I forgot to bring this up when I first commented. And actually, Alderman York's comments actually reminded me of it. One thing I'll talk about the TIFs, that when we extend a TIF, the additional 13 years past the 23, it is a requirement that you do have to get approval, if you will, for the other government bodies. But that's not what I wanted to speak to. Since our last council meeting in regards to O'Hare and the city, I think, put out a press release in this regard as well. District 205 did make a request to join ONCC, which does give us another voice on the ONCC board. So that is a positive in regards to the O'Hare noise concerns, that they have made the request. I assume that eventually it will be approved by the ONCC board as it is. But that is another spot on the board for an Elmhurst resident's perspective.
You know, one last thing I'll add is that we had talked at our last meeting about doing an ONCC, I'm sorry, a FAA meeting. And when we got in contact with the FAA, we just had more date conflicts. So right now, we're targeting October 3rd for our FAA meeting. I think we said maybe 27th or 28th last time.
We said 21st.
21st and then maybe the 26th. Ultimately, we're on October 3rd right now. And as soon as it's finalized and we get confirmation from the FAA, we'll let everybody know. Okay? Trying to hex the rest of my agenda. Thanks, Don. Okay. Any other reports? Seeing none, we'll go on to other business. Any other business? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman New York, second by Alderman Muller. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? We're adjourned. Thank you.